...to you all last month.
It's been awhile.
Yep. We're gonna get started with recognitions. There's two, right?
My first one is a catch-up from last month. The National School Counseling Week was actually the week of February 4th to the 8th, and we had canceled our February Board of Ed meeting. So, we've invited some folks from the team to join us this evening. The theme this year of school counselors, providing lessons for life. It's really designed to focus public attention on the contributions that school counselors make in a very unique way in our school systems. It's sponsored by the American School Counsel Association, and it highlights all the work that school counselors have or do, and the impact they have on our kids when it comes to school success, life success, career success, and so forth. Every year, it's recognized the first full week in February. We're a month late, but that's quite all right. We have Rachel Killian from Brown. We have Eliza Hayes from Brown. And we have the veteran old Don Kramer from Poulsen Middle School. Thank you for coming this evening, appreciate it. As an aside, the ratio of kids that they work with is quite high. They're savants with names and backgrounds of kids. Their range of issues that they work with kids are just from your normal daily bumps and grinds, to some of the more heartbreaking tragedies that our kids have to go through. They're resilient. The principals lean on them, parents lean on them, to be just a rock and an eye in the storm. They are more often than not the glue in the school. I know, I'll single out Eliza for one thing. She's very attuned to where staff is, affective staff, and I appreciate that. When I've been at Brown before, I appreciate how she's very attuned and very intuitive. Rachel came to us, is it six years ago now? Okay. From the huge, huge school district in Syracuse. And, you're right, the city, right? Yep. And we have a great history where my very, I have to do this, do what I do, okay? So, you know I love it. My very, very first try getting an administrative position, I had a superintendent who was wonderful. He told me, "You didn't make the cut, but don't quit now. You're real, real close." And I reapplied the next year, he hired me. And it so happens, that was Rachel's father. So, we had crossed paths years ago. He was superintendent in Subington.
That's crazy.
She, it's funny because I called Julie Phelps, and I said, "If you get a chance, I have a really good candidate, I think, you know, that came refer. Her name is Rachel." She cuts me off. "I already interviewed her. She's amazing." Rachel has made a name for herself. She's tremendous. Don has been here, Don thirty, how many?
Thirty-seven plus.
There we go. And Don is retiring in May.
June.
In June. That's right.
He's gonna pick it all the way to the end.
If you want to stay in that run, we can work something out.
That would suck.
You know, there's folks that have an impact on kids in a way that, you know, truly, truly is remarkable. Don has an impact on everybody. I personally have been impacted by Don. And we have had conversations offline, and, you know, I feel like a better person, literally, after knowing Don, after working with Don, and after just getting to know Don. You know, the offline conversations, and then the online conversations about students and so forth. His impact has been on the ball field, has been in the gyms, has been the after-school programs, has been his office. Yeah, his office, the school, it's remarkable. I cannot wait to celebrate Don's storied legacy here when he retires, and in June. Gotta make sure we make that night so we can, we won't roast you. That'll be at your retirement dinner. Everything, full honor here, okay? But just a representative sample, we have a tremendous team, and I just wanted to recognize that team tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the board, too, I think we're all so grateful for all the work that you do with our kids, getting their heads ready for all the learning that happens in the classroom, for fielding all the phone calls from nervous moms like me. And, and it's really wonderful work, and we're grateful to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. It's been a privilege to work in the town. You guys, and the hard work that you do, honestly, make this a very good town to go to school and to work in. So, it's a wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's a great transition point, because our next recognition happens to be the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, Board of Education Member Appreciation Month. So, you get a whole month. You get the month of March. We do not appreciate you in April, but we do in March.
We know.
So, this is-
We'd be any more appreciated, it's gonna be tough. We've been real appreciated.
Kirk, we're doubling your salary. You've earned it. You've earned it, my friend. For the record, there is no salary. These are volunteers up here. Just wanna make sure that's recorded.
She's like, "What?"
You know what? In all seriousness, though, I think with, you know, we just had a 3,000 kids, with 300 teachers, with 100-plus support staff. I, I don't know if board members, since my seventh year doing this, if you realize how consequential the decisions you make around this table are. And I think, because we're kind of in here, and we do these meetings, and we're on camera, and occasionally, you know, you're graced by professionals like this. We have students here. Jackie's always here. Ryan missed again.
Cecina.
Yes. A slide. I don't know if board members really internalize that. I always wondered how consequential the decisions are that you make in this room, and how they cascade out to kids. And for my seven years, they've been great decisions, and cascaded out in a great way, and supporting the vision that I came to the district to, to bring, and, you know, the work that goes on year over year. So, I appreciate this superintendent on behalf of all the folks, you know, that are in this district right now, from administrators, to teachers, support staff, students, and everyone in between. It's a lot of volunteer time, and it's some of the hardest volunteer time. It's not like volunteer, like I'll go make brownies for the bake sale, kind of volunteer. It's, it's heavy duty, can be emotional, and we all thoroughly appreciate it, and we have a token of that appreciation. Gail, can you help me?
Hi, Bill.
Thank you all.
Oh, well, you know what? It was snow day, so I had to-
I have water.
I hope they last.
Go.
Can we open them out?
Sure.
He is coming, yeah. He's just coming in. He's gonna tear it open. You mind? Maybe he deserves it.
Oh, it's going on a chair! A chair! A cooler!
Imagine my pitch here perfectly.
Thank you. Thank you. Very thoughtful.
I wanna recognize Laura, because Laura is the engine behind the gifts.
With cholo. Thank you, Laura. Very grateful. Okay. Public participation. Does there any member of the public who'd like to say?
No more appreciation? Hey, Murphy wants to say thank you. You don't wanna appreciate it? Don't you appreciate the board?
I don't appreciate you guys. By the way, you guys are doing a great job. We don't get these kind of gifts on the board's level, by the way. Can we, can we, we do the health benefits for the board's level?
Student representatives report.
Jackie? So, right now, we are winding down trimester two at the high schools. So, we have exams coming up next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So, exams are always nice. We have the therapy dogs that come, and all the other stress relief kind of things. They have like the coloring pages everywhere. And then trimester three, we'll start that Monday. And that's very much it. Right, right, right.
Musical's in full swing?
Yes. Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you. Student representatives report.
Okay. I have a few updates among the district reconfiguration project. So, we updated the website to indicate the tasks that are completed, so if you could just pass it. I have paper to announce that. I apologize, but, um-
Thank you.
Yeah. It's small font, big paper, it's a lot of work. So, if you-
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Is it online?
It is online. Yeah, just for your own, just for tonight, after I did it. But yes, the whole thing is online. And I sent the link in the memo to this meeting as well, so you can look at the PDF online. You'll know there's a lot of lines are shaded out. A lot of lines are shaded out. I'm colorblind. I imagine those are all different colors.
They are.
Different shades are gray to me, but, um-
Correct.
So, all those shaded out lines, what we have right now, really, is work to be done in facilities, work to be done still with some of the systems and networking. If you look down the bottom, under the Board of Ed decisions, you have one decision to make sometime this spring, and that would be to determine the new name of Brown School. So, that is something that we have a board policy on naming, that we will do a little homework on, and come back to the board for that. The transition activities, what's-
Sorry. Sorry.
Call in a meeting, cool? No, we're dropping. Okay. We do have transition activities that did begin for families. We actually have a PTO meeting, a PTO event on Friday. Did you participate? The mini-golf? Yep. Which was, the PR staff, I have to hand it to them, did a great job of coming up with activities that go across to different PTOs, to different families, to bring them all together. So, that began on a Friday night. Or actually began before that, but they have a recent meeting, Thursday, Friday? Thursday, Friday? Yeah. We obviously had the staff reassignments that were done on January 23rd, and just in case for curious, per the MEAT contract, a teacher could ask for a formal request to transfer by March 1st. So, some teachers actually did. You know, they had their initial assignment, and we told them that it was preliminary, and they're formal, you know, we reaffirmed it by June. So, a couple folks asked if they could be considered, and we'll definitely consider that. The other big moves, which I sent out a pretty comprehensive memo on, was the administrative moves. We had some changes of the administrative team. They're all very excited about that. There were a number of requests on that team that were honored, and it worked out very well for the system and for the individuals. And as you can see, we have more items in facilities. The moving is certainly something that's going to take a great deal of time. Gail, you think the document with the move is probably most appropriate now, this one?
Sure.
Yeah. So, this is really a work, a working draft. There's nothing in this document that you need to really be that overly mindful of, just to really illustrate the level of detail. That's, that's really why we shared this with the team, just so you can proof through and just see how intricate and complex this process is. There's a lot in there, you know, by teacher, and, and so forth, so you can notice that.
And does this coordinate with, I mean, they, obviously, the school that's moving into Island?
Yes, so we-
Is that where the inventory's-
We've worked with the town to make sure that we're clear that the OLM prep school is crystal clear, well in advance of the summer, of what the expectations are there. We want to avoid them moving in in July or August, and saying, "Well, I thought that we were supposed to have," so we'll be dealing with that right now. We are dealing with that right now. Okay. There are other programmatic pieces, too, that are being addressed. And, Gail, you want to do the musical now?
Sure.
Yep, okay. So, you may recall, last May, there was, I feel like a lot of our job is, you know, kind of trying to get out ahead of information, and we seem to be behind it. But, you know, we had a question with the music program at Brown, and we certainly had a plan to put sectionals and keep sectionals in there for grade five. That was never a part, that was not included. But when you're given an 18-month timeline to completely contract your school district from sixth to five, we had to give headlines and highlights in some areas, so folks colored in details. And Gail's gonna color in the accurate, real details.
Oh, yeah. So, we came up, you know, you might recall that we took a trimester each of the following classes, of theater arts, general music, and what we're calling xylo rhythms, which was that snippet that you saw. What currently is in place in grade four is that students have music, general music, one day a week for 40 minutes. What this does, of course, is offer a much richer performance offering to our students, and offers it to all students all year long. So, all students will have theater arts for 30 days, general music, and xylo rhythms. So, that also repeats in fifth grade for all students. In the current model, general music stops in grade four in our district. This would extend it to grade five, and in our current model, all students don't have, don't take a musical instrument. This would offer all students the opportunity to have one trimester of any instrument. In addition to that, we have students in grade five will have the option to have a band or a string instrument, much the way they do now. The difference is, is that those offerings would be held during, during the day, connected to their recess period, and a little bit of their core class period. And that would be on a two-out-of-six-day rotation. So, two days out of six, they would be receiving sectional instrumental education, in addition to the core program. So, that is being addressed in the elementary schools. I think, starting tomorrow, we will have all of our fourth graders introduced to this model, and to all of our third graders introduced to the general theater cycle, and general music cycle, and xylo rhythms. But sectional offerings are being discussed in our current grade four for next year. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Katie has a question, Gail.
Yeah. The fourth grade. Can you talk a little bit about the fourth grade music curriculum?
So, the fourth graders, that's a good question. In a minute, we'll be talking about all the curriculum, curriculum work that we need to do. So, of course, I said that our current fourth graders have 40 minutes once a week, right now, of general music instruction. So, we have a lot of curriculum work to do around doing a full trimester of general music for all our fourth graders, plus a full trimester of xylo rhythms. So, that's some of the-
Two trimesters as every-
That's some additional work. So, it doubles what they currently get. That's more than-
More than doubles.
Much more than that. Right now, it's once a week, and it's two full trimesters every day.
Yeah. Two full trimesters.
That's a highlight.
Yeah. It's, it's a huge difference. And then also, you know, again, it guarantees that every fifth grader now has a general music experience, and also has some sort of instrumental experience, in addition to having a selection piece as well.
For board members who were around last May, you may recall when we addressed this, one of the concerns that we had is that students were choosing an instrument in grade five without really experience with instruments. So, there wasn't much of an informed experience.
Feeling locked in on that.
And once you started, you didn't really change. So, this way, the experiential component in fourth grade allows them-
Yeah, there was also a significant amount of kids who, who didn't choose to have sectionals, which meant that their music education was ending.
They were locked out.
Really? Really? Unless they were opting back in.
Dropping this down to fourth now gives that exploratory piece, which age-wise is very appropriate.
So, we have a lot of curricular work to do with this as well. There's some, we have some PD going on for general music teachers in conjunction with this, and we're also talking about possibly dropping recorders down to grade three. Still under discussion, so. But with the boost in grade four, we're now thinking about doing that. So, I'll, I'll be reporting to curriculum.
Do you want the curriculum?
Yeah, might as well roll into that. Can I ask one quick question about this?
Hot cross buns.
Yeah.
This, so this sheet is going out to students in grade-
Just the fourth graders.
Just the fourth graders.
Tomorrow.
Because it's due back next week.
Yes. This is only for the sectionals.
Got it.
Yeah.
This is the enrichment options.
Right. This is only for fourth grade students this morning.
Fourth grade students.
Yeah. Although, third graders will get the entire cycle at the top, too. But fourth graders will have that option. So, along with that, I, I just thought I'd give you kind of an overview of some of the curriculum.
Do you realize that we renamed the school?
We've already renamed the school.
I was happy to say so.
I guess Katie signs out.
Couldn't make the cut?
We should've put it in correct this year. Some sort of Brown School.
I'm sorry, John.
In our curriculum and assessment work related to redistricting, there's quite a bit of movement going along in some of the areas, in particular around the Brown School model, which requires a lot of adjustments, a lot of meetings, a lot of pondering about what goes up, what goes down, what goes in between, and really how we maximize the time that we have with students. So, just, you know, one of the things we just talked about is the general music program, and we're doing that professional development, those adjustments. We also are looking at the addition of elementary health and guidance, kind of those components of wellness, into our elementary developmental guidance program. And then, of course, all of the adjustments with the STEAM and our math enrichment model that's currently in grade five and six, moving down to grade four, as well as the impact of Spanish increasing in grade four, decreasing in grade five. So, all of that requires lots of the experts around the table, really looking at the curricular documents, and making the adjustments where needed. But also, a big highlight of our work is creating a draft of the K-5 report card, because we want our report card to look similar to the elementary K-3 continuing in fourth, five, and also being closely aligned to the curriculum that we've adopted via the board. So, that's some of the highlights of the curricular work to come. And ongoing. Any questions on any of those?
What do they qualify for in terms of years of foreign or world language when they hit high school?
What do they qualify for?
Most of, I think over two-thirds of our kids are in Spanish III if they stay with Spanish.
If they're in fourth grade, and then when they go to high school.
Kindergarten.
Or kindergarten, same. Kindergarten, so then when they get to high school, then it's automatic.
Yeah. Our standard is three. And I'd say-
That's always the standard.
Yeah.
There is some, you know, some kids, you know, elect to take Latin, Chinese, you know, we broaden as they get older. French is included at Poulsen.
Okay. And that will stay?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
For sixth graders. Because they don't currently get three.
French is still staying in seventh grade.
Seventh grade. Not in sixth. Right. It's staying at Poulsen, but not down to sixth.
Okay.
Any questions for Gail?
I've said this, every time, I'll say, "Oh, Greg?"
Jackie.
Or Jackie.
I have a question.
You have a question?
I was just wondering about, so you said in fifth grade, then they have the option to pick an instrument, and that's instead of a recess and part of a core class?
It's instead of a recess period, two out of six days. So, the parents and the students would have to understand that on their lessons day, they're missing the last 10 minutes of a 70-minute core class, plus an afternoon recess period. They'll still have the morning recess period.
There's two recesses.
But we're doing two recesses like in the elementary block. So, they're still getting more movement than what they're currently getting.
So, but even if they don't pick a sectional, they still go into strings and band, right?
If they don't pick a sectional, they will all be in xylo rhythms and general music.
So, would they have the opportunity to choose an instrument after fifth grade, or it's like you choose it in fifth grade or not?
They would still, it would still be the same as it is now, like they could go into it if they so choose, and some of them might go into it in sixth grade. We haven't seen with our numbers that that happens a lot. They usually kind of jump in at fifth. But that option's still there for them. But all kids, 100% of kids will have general music, 100% of kids will have xylo rhythms. So, they'll be a part of, with xylo rhythms, a part of a musical happening, playing an instrument, and then they'll also have the ability to elect for sectionals.
And Jackie, the hope is that with a richer experience, right before they actually do choose an instrument, it'd be a little bit more of an informed decision. Currently, fourth grade does recorder.
They do.
And they jump into choosing an instrument in fifth grade. So, it's kind of hard to say that maybe my sibling did this, maybe mom and dad, maybe I'm disinterested, but they haven't actually messed around with it to kind of see what they were like.
So, now they're messing around in fourth grade, and then they-
Be a much more experiential music program.
They're doing xylo rhythms in grade four, and in grade five. All kids, 100% of kids. Yeah. So, I think that's a unique part, too, beyond even just picking an instrument. What does it feel like to play in a group, or to be a part of a group and make a sound? So, they'll have two years of that, all kids, not just something-
And two trimesters in, in fourth grade.
One trimester xylo rhythm, one trimester general.
General.
And then, Gail, just brought up a question for me, then when they go to sixth grade, because currently it's sixth graders.
It's the same.
So, they'll be at Poulsen, so they'll have what they have now. So, it really is the major changes for the fifth grade.
And, and fourth grade adding a lot.
Fourth is a major change.
Right, right.
Fourth is the major, major.
That's a major change.
And fifth is major, major.
Right.
Because they're both adding a lot. Yeah, I think we have also just a highlight. We have an expert from Hart School of Music, who is doing the professional development, and it actually has a lot of impact in the way that kids approach the reading of music. So, John Leonard's been a part of that PD. He thinks it has huge impact in middle and high school as well. So, that's been really exciting, to adopt a similar methodology all the way through.
And that's the fourth and fifth grade, too? Because I knew that was one of the concerns with changing the fifth grade, was the music reading as they step forward.
Yeah, we're actually bringing it down. So, we're kind of doing some PD before we're writing curriculum, the way our model usually works best. But it's been really nice to have somebody who has experience throughout the system, to see the benefits of this strategy, and how it helps kids to read music more efficiently. So, that'll be great for all kids, too.
Another, another win is the expansion of theater program, too.
Yeah.
Which is, we've had a lot of requests to give, yeah, to have more access to the theater program, so that, that's a big deal.
And it also, I think it'll help all programs, because it's not forcing choice. It's not either or.
Yeah.
It's, it's and, and, and.
Yeah.
I have one more question, Gail.
Yeah.
How will the current fourth graders, are they gonna be exposed to sort of what these instruments are in the next week at school?
Yeah, so, just every year, brings down kind of a little trial and error show, and brings down, introduces the instruments to the kids.
So, they'll know what a-
Little sample.
Yes.
French horn actually is.
Yeah.
Before they fill this out. She usually goes with students, too, right? And lets them show.
Yeah, she does. They do a nice job of the little introduction.
Great.
All the way through. Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
Couple other, yeah, a couple other matters. Is it Monday, Tri-State, every time, eight-thirty?
Monday. Yes.
So, this is gonna be-
Eight o'clock and 30. Eight-thirty.
This is gonna be my plea. It was embedded in an update, and I know it's very difficult with your work schedules, but this is a biggie. We're part of the Tri-State Consortium, which kind of flies under the radar, unfortunately, because it is a consortium of 45 or so incredibly high-performing, very strong school systems in the Tri-State area. We're very proud to be a part of that. We applied four or five years ago to get in. We had a visit two years ago on our math program, which highlights mathematical thinking.[1564.45]
But it's been really nice to have somebody who has experience throughout the system to see the benefits of this strategy and how it helps kids to read music more efficiently. So that'll be great for all kids, too.
Another, another win is the expansion of theater program, too.
Yeah.
Which is, we've had a lot of requests to give, yeah, to have more access to the theater program. So that's a big deal.
And it also, I think it'll help all programs, because it's not forcing choice. It's not either or.
Yeah.
It's, it's and, and, and.
Yeah.
I have one more question, Gail.
Yeah.
How will the current fourth graders, are they going to be exposed to sort of what these instruments are in the next week at school?
Yeah, so just every year brings down kind of a little trial and error show, and brings down, introduces the instruments to the kids.
So they'll know what a...
Little sample.
Yes.
French horn actually is.
Yeah.
Before they fill this out. She usually goes with students, too, right? And lets them show.
Yeah, she does. They do a nice job of the little introduction.
Great.
All the way through. Yeah.
Any other questions?
A couple other, yeah, a couple other matters. Is it Monday Tri-State every time, eight-thirty?
Monday!
So this is going to be...
Eight o'clock and thirty? Eight-thirty.
This is going to be my plea. It was embedded in an update, and I know it's very difficult with your work schedules, but this is a biggie. We're part of the Tri-State Consortium, which kind of flies under the radar, unfortunately, because it is a consortium of 45 or so incredibly high-performing, very strong school systems in the tri-state area. We're very proud to be a part of that. We applied four or five years ago to get in. We had a visit two years ago on our math program, which highlights mathematical thinking. It's an organization that supports our work to go above and beyond what the current standard is out in the field of education. And our follow-up visit is Monday morning at eight-thirty. Eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, you'll be right in this room. If at all possible, if you can ever have a favor at work on account of your board membership, I'd ask you to do it on Monday. So I just want to put that out there. Well, the full report on that, anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just, you know, when we talk about how we evaluate our programs, Tri-State Consortium is some of our most stunning critical fronts. I'll just read some of the towns that are represented on our returning visitors. So it has the executive director of Tri-State. We have people here from Ridgefield, New Canaan, Wilton, Easton-Redding, Region Nine, Westport, Hewlett-Woodmere. Did I say Wilton? Wilton, Weston. So there, these visitors are coming back after a year and a half of doing a full three-day evaluation, deep dive on our math program. And that's with all sorts of authentic student work, that's with our curriculum, that's with our assessment data. They give us a full report, and from that report, we come back in a year and a half and we tell them what actions we've taken. So it is, it is a really important time for us, and it's a way that we hold ourselves accountable for continuous improvement.
They don't pull punches. They don't come in and pat us on the back. It is a very powerful experience. And the executive director, Dr. Marty Brooks, wrote a fascinating piece in an education journal, Education Leadership, a few years ago, on the peer evaluation model, which is what this is, as really being the gold standard when it comes to evaluating the performance of school systems. We have the folly of these accountability models and so forth, which make up numbers and permutations, and they're different in every state. But if you really want to get down to the, you know, the gold standard, it's peer review is really what matters in most fields. And that's essentially what our version is here of this. So yeah, the chance, it'd be, it'd be great to have you there on Monday. So that's my summary.
Those are your other matters?
I'm Catholic, so no. I try a little bit of guilt once in a while. A couple, just a couple of quickies. You've probably seen the legislature bandy about all different kinds of ideas around regionalization and so forth. This is a time period of just kind of wait and see. We get, in January and February, we get a lot of bills that get thrown up against the wall. There's interesting, I think what we're going to find out in the next few months is how much we actually already do regionalize. I think that no one realizes that. And once they put a bill out there, they'll get an answer to that question, even if they didn't ask the question, they'll get an answer. There's so much that gets done between transportation, right here in Madison. You know, we do regionalization with some of our outplacement students for special education, transportation. Our special education program, the STRIVE program, is a pure regionalized model. We have business operations and facility operations, which we share with town already. We have professional development that's been shared across school districts. We invite folks in, they invite us in, and other kinds of programming that happens. So we were asked for a survey through LEARN of what we do, and all the districts kind of put it into the hopper and saw, we do a lot already. We really do a lot. So when the time comes, I'm sure we'll, you know, have some information about where things may or may not go. But I think before we get there, we will certainly learn a lot about what we already do in our districts, not just Madison. The last topic, it's a bit sobering, but it's going to go out in writing at some point. I'm going to take you back first to November. Back in November, you may have remembered, we had a local district in New Haven County that was really confronted with some very significant issues around anti-semitic comments and behaviors. It was newsworthy. I respect the folks that work in the district and the way they try to handle things. I don't know the details, I don't know much about it, so I can't speak to it. But I do know at that time, we had a question right off the bat from a lovely parent who said, "What do you do?" And Gail and I said, "This is a great opportunity for us to not look out the window, but to look in the mirror instead, and what do we do?" So you may remember, I put together a very comprehensive perspective on what we do in educating kids in a very, very trying time, culturally, socially, politically, social media-y, whatever it is. Well, about a month and a half ago, I had a lovely mom and dad visit and ask a similar question on the topics of race, racism, tolerance, and civil discourse, or lack thereof. What do we do? A school system, what do we do? So we're doing a deep dive right now. I sent out a, an inquiry to a lot of instructional leaders in the district and asked them, "Can you please, you know, just send it all to me? I'll put it all in the hopper." And I'm going to do a very similar approach that I did back in November on the issue around antisemitism and so forth on those topics. What we find is when we ask the question and we start to look, we do a lot, and very, very affirming. But I will say this, and I said this to the parents, and I say this a lot. We're asked to do a lot of things in schools. We're asked to do well beyond our purview, in my opinion, as schools at times. And we really have one arrow in our quiver, and that arrow was teaching and learning. So everything that we can do in the vein of teaching and learning, I feel we're at our best, and it's what we're trained to do. I think schools kind of get out of their, their zone of what they're trained to do sometimes, and we're asked to do things out of that zone. So Gail and I are rabid about curriculum and instruction for that reason, because it's who we are as professionals and what we can offer. So one really, really quick nugget of what I mean by that. The question about civil discourse comes up. From kindergarten through AP English courses. We have an approach called Accountable Talk that we train kids in. And that approach is, how do you have discourse around topics in literature that you may not agree on? It's not just limited to English, of course, but in English, we use it this way in language arts. How do you make a point? How do you contest, confront, and have discourse in a way where you question each other in a way that is civil, but gets your point across? That starts as a poster. I was in a classroom, a kindergarten classroom a couple months ago. It was a poster for kindergartners. And how to do that? Almost the same exact poster was in an AP literature class up at high school. That's just one little nugget where I say, "We teach and learn, that's what we do, and we can take on these big needy topics when we're in our zone, and that's where I'll teach and learn." So much more to come on that. I'm excited about doing this, because I think we have a lot to share. But it is, it's a daunting topic, or a series of topics for us to address. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
On that note, it's all yours.
All right. Board members, any of you have anything? Oh, yeah?
I would just like to call out Vibe for, once again, being Grand Champions in New York a couple weeks ago. They're probably going to be nationally ranked again this year as a result. And it was a fantastic show. And I believe on the 15th, they're having one more...
Just got my ticket.
Yeah, they're having one more last hurrah for this show for this year. So, at the high school, so...
It's a fundraiser?
Yeah, it's a fundraiser. So get your tickets and go see this. Heck of a show.
I have a couple things, too. I just wanted to let the board know, there'll be a special meeting invitation going out. We're going to try and abbreviate our next board meeting on the 19th. Yep, a little bit. To have a follow-up to our retreat last fall, and our spring retreat, which will be moderated by Tom Mooney again as kind of a follow-up. And he mentioned today that he thought maybe, given that he gave us such a foundation of information this fall, going through particular scenarios of situations, which he often does in our newspaper that we get from him, going through particular scenarios that he's come up with so that we can ask questions. So if any board members have topics or scenarios or something that they would like me to get to him, please feel free to let me, or let me know, and I'll make sure that they get to him. So we will do that after our abbreviated board meeting on the 19th. And then the other thing I wanted to do was introduce Selectman Murphy, who is our new board liaison. And so he will be keeping tabs on us and reporting back to the selectmen at their meetings. So thank you for taking on yet another thing. Appreciate you.
There's a short straw.
He gets a gift.
And that's all I have. So moving on to committee reports, curriculum and student development.
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Communications. Yes, so the communications committee met tonight to plan for our upcoming communication piece. This one will be focused on the afterplay and project at Brown School. We also discussed future topics we'll be working on, including the new Brown School program, per pupil expenditures, and the balance scorecard. Our last piece that we put out on the budget was posted February 8th. Each column, as you know, is posted on the Board of Ed website, the board, as well as the district and town's social media. In our columns, you always provide links to more information and notify readers of upcoming meetings and events. We also discussed ongoing and upcoming outreach in the community. Our next meeting will be April 9th. Please, just a reminder for all the board members, that the focus of these communications is the work of the board and how that affects the town. Please put the word, share this information widely. If you have any suggestions for future topics, please let any one of the committee members know. Thank you. Committee report. I went to the PRC meeting and plugged, and asked them to let their memberships know to subscribe to the newsletter as well. Hopefully that message gets out. Thank you.
I just want to thank the committee for the great work it's doing. You know, already it's making a huge difference. I'm seeing a lot of visibility. You know, the local press is usually picking up and running copies of the bulletins, and it's really been a positive thing, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a good, good group. Thank you. Facilities.
All right, facilities met on February 26th, and Billy was unable to be there. He was away, so the superintendent gave the superintendent's and facilities director's report combined. They are busy getting ready for the summer work. The biggest thing there is going to be the massive moving operation, and most attention is going to be focused on that. Poulsen is going to be used as swing space for furniture while everything's being moved around, and the high school track surface will be replaced this summer. We received a CIP update and, from Galen, and it seems like things are still on track there. And I think they have, what, July, they have to be done by July?
July 1.
July 1. We also received a tri-board working group report from Galen, who also serves on that. And things seem to be on track. I know we're going to get a more in-depth report on that, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to encroach it to your territory there.
Feel free.
I'll let you, I'll let you get that. But it was helpful for the, for the, for the committee to hear it. And it does seem like you guys are on track for an April 1st conclusion. So with that in mind, we discussed at the facilities level what the Board of Ed process would look like from there. And then we also received an update on the reconfiguration, which is going along swimmingly.
We're on schedule.
That's it. End of report.
Great, thank you. Finance.
We did not meet, so no report.
Personnel.
We have not met, but I do have a report. Our council for teamster negotiations has updated us. He's reached out to council for the teamsters for purposes of moving the matter along. I can't report anything more substantive than he has made outreach and is hoping to push the matter forward. The personnel committee will be meeting shortly in our next iteration to go over our regular annual review of administered contracts with the superintendent's office. That'll be happening shortly. In my role as chair of the personnel committee, just a quick report. I served on a review committee for the hiring process for the new insurance consultant for the district. Those reviews took place on February 6th and 7th. And Katie and I are also serving on two distinct rounds of interviews for the assistant personnel.
You had your first meeting yesterday.
Training.
We did. We had the first meeting yesterday with candidates. Our training was last Thursday.
My training's Monday.
I guess about that, and I'm sorry to, probably should have heard this at some point and followed a little more closely and asked earlier. But my understanding was we just switched about five years ago, or four years ago, the insurance consultant, and what precedent is changing?
An interest in going out for RFP, but also a change in the consultants that we worked with from that firm, they had moved on. So we thought with the, with the question about, you know, should we just do it? We haven't done RFP in a few years, should we do it? It was a good time, because the folks we worked with had left the firm. And I think everybody on the table felt very comfortable with the selection.
Yeah, I would say we all left with the process well. We felt very comfortable about the review process.
That was...
And that's shared with the town.
Yes. We had representatives from first placement, from human resources, both districts, and broadly, finance, myself, and my team, so I had Tom.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Policy to me.
We have not met, but I also have a report. Just to mention that you're going to be voting tonight on policy 5110.4, suspension expulsion exclusion from school activities, and 5144, physical restraint, exclusion, exclusionary, timeout. Both are third readings, and you've seen these for a long time, over many months, due to cancellations and snow and anything you can name. So the policy committee has not received any requests to amend this beyond, I think, a one-word change in one of them after the first reading. So hopefully you're comfortable with it at this point. End of report.
Thank you. Learn liaison.
I attended the Learn Liaison meeting back in February 7th, seems like a while ago, just very briefly. We received legislative updates, reviewed regional transportation updates, and the committee also heard a presentation on the current issues surrounding kindergarten entry dates, along with universal pre-K.
Thank you.
End of report.
Kirk, tri-board.
The tri-board has completed getting input from the public. That involved several public forums, a number of parents coming to one of our Wednesday morning meetings, visits with the realtor community, and the receipt of proposals from a number of individuals in the, in the town, in the community, including Mr. Klaske. And we have now compiled those, thanks to Wendy, and have used them to create a set of pros and cons for various options for a five-school facility, four-school facility, and three-school facility. Tomorrow, Colliers is bringing in an architect who will review site feasibility, and also will get some preliminary cost numbers for various of the options. And we intend to make our April 1st deadline where we will present to the three boards, selectmen, finance, and the Board of Ed, our, our one or two preferred options, probably two.
Great.
And just to add to that, yep, after April 1, the process after that, where it will go. It's important for the board to know that this is a board vote decision. Board action has to happen for CIP. So facilities committee, I would imagine it would start there, possibly finance, I'd need to work through that. But then the full board has to vote in June for any kind of option to go forward.
And Kirk, is the final tri-board larger group, 20, all 20 of us? Has that date been set yet?
It is not.
Okay. Thank you. Audience response?
I'm going to embarrass a couple of kids I'm very impressed with who are here, young men who are here. Henry Wilson and Jake Fider are here doing the, is it Project Mr. Ace class?
Yeah.
It is, yeah. So they're doing some work. I'll have to explain in a second. Star of our show is right over here, Mrs. Sandor. I got an email from Henry and Jake a couple weeks ago. We finally had a meeting last week, had a great conversation up at hand. The film program at our high school, the entire TV studio, I don't think folks realize how advanced, how sophisticated it is. You're both sophomores, correct?
Yes.
I felt like I was talking to 20-somethings. I mean, just their poise, their maturity, their crystal clarity on what they wanted to do. And they're here tonight, they interviewed me. I hope it came out good. Did you get my good side? Good, all right? They did a great job. I just can't believe we get these guys for a couple more years. It's great. I threw an idea their way, that I don't know if it'll work, but we're going to try. Maybe at some point, talk to Mr. Arsenal, our film teacher. I would love, we have a demographic that does not plug into the communication, I think, as well as those who are really involved in social media and so forth. But that demographic typically will watch the cable access channel. And I thought it might be interesting if we did like a 20 or 30-minute, almost like a Meet the Press kind of thing, you know, at the studio. These guys would get some great experience, you know, maybe do it once a month.
Hard-hitting questions.
Yeah, once a month or something like that. They could be behind the camera, they don't have to be the interviewers, or they could be some of them. But I thought it'd be a neat way to get some circulation and some good, and some good experiences for the students as well. But your project, guys, do you mind, just for a second, just talking about your project?
Turn the camera on now, thank you.
This particular one is a story for, that will submit to 561 Student News. We just wrote a script for a little news story. This one's about the student representatives to the Board of Education. As far as the type of filming, but, yeah.
So Jackie, you ready?
Send us the link.
I didn't know that was happening.
We want you all natural.
Investigative reporting.
Could have made credit for it. You asked a great question about music, they got on camera.
Hard-hitting.
So, thanks for coming, guys. You're always welcome.
Thank you, David. Well done.
Good luck. Okay. Consent agenda. Consent agenda, let's see. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Can I make a comment because we didn't raise it earlier?
Discussion.
Just to thank the Brown School PTO for the $1,000 donation to the Brown School stepping on Seth's territory. He's getting a little slow, Nellie.
Had a circle. Couple of years ago, you would have got a monkey. I was waiting until she called for a discussion. I can't believe I...
It's like a red cat streak that was just broken.
Well, our sergeant-at-arms here jumped the, you know, jumped the gun.
Jumped the queue, that's okay. So...
Motion to retract comment?
It's all in the same motion, so all in favor. I oppose. Abstain, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2019 Board of Education meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Abstain, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the removal of used books and equipment.
So we'll move.
Anybody would like to see said removed books or equipment? Discussion? That was the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Abstain, motion carries. Laura, not writing anything down again, no. Sorry. I need a motion to approve policy 5110.4, suspension expulsion exclusion from school activities.
So move.
Does not need a second because it came on the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Abstain, motion carries. I need a motion to approve policy 5144, physical restraint, seclusion, exclusionary timeout.
So move.
Second? Oh, it does need a second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain, motion carries. Any old business? Future agenda items? Meetings and dates and what importance are attached? And now I need a...
Next Monday, eight thirty, Tri-State Consortium.
And tomorrow, public hearing of the budget, seven o'clock at Poulsen. And I need a motion to enter into executive discussion to discuss the mid-year evaluation of the superintendent.
So move. Second.